Welcome to Midwest City Council Meeting, Special Council Meeting. Actually is rescheduled from October 27th to tonight due to the obvious weather that we've had. Thank you for being here. Need to make a couple announcements. We do have Ward Four Shawn Reed on the telephone calling in for this meeting. Also, if you're here for the stack, which is discussion item number eight, that will not be heard tonight. Although I would love for you to have, stick around and see the rest of the proceedings. But if you, you have a life, you might want to do something else. But it, it, it won't be heard tonight and it'll be continued on December 8th. So with that being said, if you could stand. Okay, I'm sorry. And also, item number six will be continued at another date. So if you would please stand, Vaughn, would you come down and lead us in the invocation? And I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for this city council and their willingness to serve in this capacity. Father, we know they have difficult decisions before them tonight and we ask your wisdom and discernment be upon them. Father, we, we ask that you be with our city as we recover from this most recent disaster. And all the folks that are out in the field, ensuring our safety and ensuring that we have good quality services to, for our citizens. Father, just protect them and keep them safe. Father, we, we live in a great nation. We're blessed. We live in a great state. Father, we have many men and women who are willing to sacrifice time away from home and family to guarantee our freedoms. And they're, they're currently all over the world and we ask your peace and protection be upon them. Father, and those who are, who are continuously ensuring the safety of our city and on the streets. And we just continue to ask your protection be upon them as well. Father, we, we thank you so much for the sacrifice that you and your son made. Father, the blood that was shed on our behalf. We don't know how to say thank you, but just to say thank you. We don't deserve it. We ask these favors in your son's holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Be seated, please. Now we move into community-related announcements. Mr. Lyon.
Thank you, Mayor. There's going to be some announcements for me and then from Assistant City Manager Vaughn Sullivan. First of all, Tricker Trail that is scheduled for October 31st, this Saturday, has been moved due to the ice storm. The new location will be the former Sears parking lot at 6909 East Reno Avenue from noon until 3:00 PM. Please stay in your vehicle at all times throughout the trail. It is, is going to be a great afternoon of drive-through trick-or-treating for children of all ages. Costume and candy buckets, filler cases and other candy receptacles are encouraged. You can decor, even decorate your car as long as it is street safe. So once again, at the Sears, it won't be at the park, it'll be at the Sears parking lot. The City of Midwest City's 10th Annual Food Drive at Midwest City Sam's Club is November 6th, 7th, and 8th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The Veterans Day Parade has been postponed due to COVID concerns. A rescheduled date has not been determined. However, to honor our veterans, we are doing a fly our flags. Midwest City and the Midwest City Chamber of Commerce are coming together to show our appreciation for our veterans by flying our flags the week of Veterans Day, November 8th through the 14th. Midwest City residents and businesses are encouraged to fly flags at your homes and businesses throughout the week in honor of those who bravely served us. For power outages, so please do not call our 911 or city offices. If you have a power outage, report your outage directly to OGE by calling 405-272-9595, 405-272-9595. Or on their website at oge.com as well as via text with my OGE alerts. Our understanding is that OGE has contractor crews from 10 states helping to respond to the widespread outages to get their customers back in services quickly as they can. OGE is reporting this is their second largest storm in the history of the company. Report downed power lines to 800-522-6870. Please stay away from the downed lines and anything they are touching. You never know if they're live or not. Scammers, if you need to hire a contractor for tree services or property repairs, be wary of these storm chasers who knock on your door. They should have a city peddler's permit from the City of Midwest City to be able to hit, knock on your door and make contact. So that they're verified as at least someone that has come in and provided their information. Finally, Embarc Public Transportation is offering free rides for voters on Election Day next Tuesday. And the rest of the announcements are going to come from Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan is a veteran of ice storms. This is his third, third ice storm that seems to follow him. But anyway, Vaughn, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. The good news is I was in town this time, Mayor. I'm not sure what that means or anything, but it, normally I'm not when these things happen. We want our citizen to be fully informed about things that are happening in their city. And Claudia Kousse, our Public Information Director, is going to be ensuring that our information is updated daily, if it, if there is an update. Her plan is to have any, in all changes uploaded by 3:30 PM each day, if there's anything new to be uploaded. If you go to our homepage of our website, you'll see announcements there on the homepage. And if you click on that, one of the first things you'll see when you click on that is a, a, a spot that says Storm 2020 Updates. I believe is what it says, something to that effect. Is that pretty close, Claudia? Okay. So that's, that's going to be our clearinghouse for any and all information. We'd like you, as a mayor and council, to direct people to that location. If you don't mind, you obviously use your, your social media outlets as well to direct people to that location. So that we're all sending a consistent message, please. Tree debris, as far as what we have on the ground citywide right now, this is my best gut feeling. It's not scientific, but I believe this is a bigger event than we had in December of 2007. Many of you were here and, and were around during that event. It was, it was an event that took us several months to recover from in this community. And we anticipate similar things with this. But I do believe that the volume of vegetative debris will be considerably more than what we had in 2007. Currently, what we're asking our citizens to do, just like we did in '07, and, and we've had some other smaller events since then as well, is to place all of your vegetative debris, and I use that term very specifically, vegetative debris, within 10 feet of the back of the curb. That places it in the right of way and makes it eligible for us to be reimbursed by the federal government if and when we get a national disaster declaration. So go ahead and start doing that now. Please keep it away from gas meters, mailboxes, cars. We ask that you not stack it over your water meter. That could interfere with the transmission over the, over the local area network that we use to read those meters. So I know that limits folks on the space, but that is what we're asking folks to do. And that worked well in previous storms. Other disposable options, some folks may not wait, may not want to wait on us. We understand that because this process is going to take probably more than one sweep of our city. And some debris will be at the curb for a considerable amount of time. You can understand the monumental task of covering this entire city with crews. It's going to take a while. So if you want to go ahead and dispose of your debris yourself, use your pickup, your trailer, whatever means you have, you can do that by taking it to our compost facility at 7420 Northeast 36th. That is our wastewater recovery facility. We are open currently. We're going to see how this goes, but currently Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, 8 to 3. We'll see if those hours meet the demand and we are willing to adjust accordingly. But as it stands right now, those are the normal days and hours that you can bring it to the compost facility. Reminder, you do need to be a Midwest City resident. You do need to show your utility bill to have access to that facility. The next option you'll have is a landfill at 3201 Mosley Road, which is East Oak landfill, near the intersection of Air Depot and Northeast 36th Street. Once again, if you show your utility bill, you get a special rate there that's negotiated and contracted. So be sure you take your utility bill with you to that location. That, the advantage to that location is it's a six, it's a, it's a six-day-a-week operation. Their hours are a little more extensive than ours. One of the things that we are currently going to, to do is to suspend, I use that word carefully. We are going to suspend our curbside bulk pickup. It's very important that our citizens understand you cannot co-mingle household items with this vegetative debris. If we wind up with a declaration and an inspector from FEMA sees some of that debris co-mingled and it happened to get on a truck somehow, it could ruin our eligibility. We could be penalized for that. So we can't take a chance on trying to allow the citizens to segregate this, these items at the curb and then have basically three different crews of men, people trimming dangerous hangers over the road, trucks picking up debris at the curb, and then adding a third set of logistics to that is just too, we think at this point in time, a little bit too difficult. Secondly, we're going to need some of our own forces. We're going to need to loosen up the bandwidth a little bit and use some of our own forces to monitor our contractor during this process. It's very important if we, for us to remain qualified for these reimbursements that will hopefully come from the federal government, that we document, document, document everything the contract tractor does. And that's going to take quite a few of our own folks. FEMA prefers that we use our own forces for that, for obvious reasons. So that is our plan at this time. We have met with our contractor this afternoon, Paul Streets, myself, and a few other individuals. They are preparing crews and trying to get logistics, things lined up, equipment, and so on and so forth to start the project. I cannot give you at this point a day that they will start sweeping the city. We need to give our citizens some time, first of all, to get their stuff to the curb. So will that start next week, two weeks, three weeks? At this point, we don't know the answer. But as soon as we do have the answer, it will go on our website. So once again, watch that website for new information. Let's see, Mr. Lyon, what, okay, a couple, a couple of other little safety things. We are discouraging strongly, although we can't prevent it, but we are discouraging strongly our citizens from using our parks at this time and our trails. There are a lot of dangerous things hanging above your head, even if you can traverse through the park or you can walk or ride on the trail. There are things hanging over your head that you cannot see and you don't know when a wind gust or something like that would release a dangerous limb that can fall. They're everywhere in our parks. So we don't have any way to police that per se, but we're cautioning folks to not do that. Golf courses are closed until further notice. They're just too dangerous. Our plan is to hopefully get the nine-hole open, Hidden Creek open as quickly as possible. So people will have that option. There's less trees, there are less trees there. It'll be a little easier to clean it up and get it ready. So the plan is to get it cleaned up, get it open first, and then start on John Conrad. We'll work as quickly as we can with the contractors that we'll have available to get these things where they can be safely used, these assets. I believe that's all I have at this time, Mr. Lyon. Appreciate your indulgence, council. You have any questions?
On the, on the website, it says that there's no defined size on a, on a debris. Is that correct?
That is correct. This, this, that's a great question, Mr. Byrne. In this type of situation and the type of equipment that is used to clean it up, they can pick up, I won't say anything, but most things. I think when we get a little further into this, we may put some limitations on tree trunks. First of all, I did not mention that it's very important that this is to be storm-related debris. This is, this is, hopefully, most of it will be just branches, okay? But when it comes to a large trunk that may have a root ball on it or something like that, we'll just have to work with those situations on a case-by-case. But as a general rule, you are correct, sir. You don't have to cut it to a specific length and that sort of thing like we have on our normal services that we provide.
It's also important, and I noticed you said 10 feet, they've got to get it, they can't put it on the street. Correct?
No, no, sir. Thank you. Please avoid putting it over a sidewalk, putting it on the street. I know that creates difficulties. Please try not to put it directly under high lines or under large trees. These are large grapple trucks with basically a large claw and a crane that are, that are used to pick this debris up. And they can't operate safely underneath high lines or underneath large trees. So I know, we understand that creates some issues for some citizens, just don't have a big enough yard, can't seem, but please do the best you can to get it within those parameters. If someone has a question about whether they can or cannot do something, please call Public Works and we can dispatch a supervisor to help them with their logistics in their each, each individual location.
Vaughn, would you talk about the Department of Emergency Management Damage Assessment?
Oh, thank you. I skipped that one, didn't I? Very important. Debbie has, has been in contact with State Emergency Management and they are asking for damage reports to your home, your business. They're, they have a lot of paperwork they have to do that they have to submit on up to the federal government that help to satisfy the requirements of a national signature by our president on a natural, on a disaster. So if you want to, we are asking any and all citizens to go to damage-ok.gov. All this information is on our website. Report your damages, report your losses. This helps them to make their calculations. I don't pretend to even understand, Debbie, the whole formula that they have to go through. But it is based on our overall population and dollars per person and so on and so forth. So they will also do an overall damage assessment of our city as far as what's, what, what our public cost to us as a, as a public agency will be, will add that to the, to the mix as well. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Vaughn. Next, we move into a little bit happier note. President Chad Denson of the Oklahoma Chapter of American Planning Association is going to present a state award for outstanding citizen planner to Stan Grill. Stan Grill is a former city manager, a big shot at Rose State College, and has sat on our planning commission for 20-plus years. And he just retired and is well-deserving of this award. So Chad, do you have the floor?
Mayor and council members, appreciate you letting, inviting us here today. Again, it's a happy moment for the American Planning Association. Again, my name is Chad Denson. I'm the American Planning Association Oklahoma Chapter President. Today, I'm here to present an award to an special individual who has advanced in promoting the cause of planning in a public arena. A person that's demonstrating outstanding leadership to the community. Midwest City is lucky to have an individual like this in their community. This individual has appointed to the Midwest City Planning Commission in July 2000, elected chairman in February 2015, and retired from the commission in August of 2020. He served on several land use, transportation, recreation committees. He was a vital and success of the 2018 Midwest City Innovation District Study. He's a veteran from the U.S. Air Force and has a strength, and strengthened the partnership between Midwest City community and Tinker Air Force Base. As representative of the American Planning Association Oklahoma Chapter, we are proud to honor and present the 2020 Outstanding Citizen Planner Award to Stan Grill from Midwest City.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor and City Manager and Council Members. I've been involved in municipal government since 1983, actually since the 60s, since my dad was a firefighter. And my best experience with any city government was the last 20 years. Midwest City, I was not born in Midwest City, but Midwest City is my hometown. Thank you so much and I appreciate the opportunity and thank you, sir.
Thank you, Stan. Thank you for your service to our community. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to miss you, Stan.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I need to run. You could be a grandpa.
Okay, that's more important than being here. We do have a couple of proclamations we need to do tonight. And the first one is an important one, and I wish we had some folks here to receive this. But whereas the history and culture of our great nation has been significantly influenced by the American Indian and Indigenous peoples, whereas the contribution of American Indians have enhanced the freedom and prosperity and greatness of America today. Whereas their customs, traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy in the state of Oklahoma and throughout the United States. Whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 in recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in 1990, designated in the month of November as American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of American Indian Heritage Month and the community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural and artistic events, educational and historical activities have been planned, hopefully, in, in lieu of COVID. Now therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2020 as National American Heritage Month and encourage all citizens in our community to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. The next one is Extra Mile Day. And whereas Midwest City is a community which acknowledges the special vibrancy that exists within the entire community when the individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. Whereas we're a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the public by giving of themselves wholeheartedly, committing to the individual ambitions, families, friends, and society. And whereas Midwest City wishes to thank all the individuals and organizations in our community who go the extra mile in order to make the difference, and we are proud to support Extra Mile Day. So therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2020, as Extra Mile Day. And the City of Midwest City encourage all citizens to go that extra mile in your own lives, but also acknowledge those who are committed to making Midwest City a better place to live and work. And you will have plenty of opportunity over the next three months to go the extra mile. Okay, we now move into the consent agenda of our, consent part of our agenda. These items are placed on consent agenda. The members of the council or members of the audience can, can hear each item or the council can approve each item with one unanimous vote. If any member of the council or the audience wishes to hear an, hear an item, it can be pulled and heard in regular order. With that being said, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any abstentions? Motion carries. We move into our discussion items. And again, I want to reiterate that discussion items six and eight have been pulled and tabled until a further date by the representatives of those two wards. Mr. Lyon, item number one.
Discussion and consideration of appointing Susie Byrne to the Parkland Review Committee as the tree board's appointment to fill the unexpired term of Grace Sullivan and to reappoint Susie Byrne to the Parkland Review Committee for an additional three-year term.
Any questions? Chair entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
And motion and a second and discussion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. Item number two.
Discussion and consideration of approving an ordinance amending Chapter 11 City Emergency Management Section 11-4 face coverings and social distancing during COVID-19 pandemic emergency and providing for repealer and severability. We do not have Phil Maytubby tonight, but he has sent information via Mr. Byrne for our latest statistics.
Phil Maytubby is with the Oklahoma City County Health Department. He's been here the last couple of times that we've met and he is dealing with the weather, just like everybody else, and is using a chainsaw instead of being here. And he sent me an email in, to some of the data that he would have talked about tonight. And he said, "The difference in the transmission rates due to masking is helping to keep our medical system from being completely overrun. We've seen record highs, high levels of hospitalizations, cases, and now deaths." And it's his recommendation that we extend the mask coordinates. He told me the positivity rate is above eight and is climbing. And what we're trying to get to is two consecutive weeks of less than five. And that, and that would be one thing I'd like to address, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know how we do this, but we're bringing this back on a 30-day or 45-day deal. Is it, is there a way to make it where it's, it's additional work for staff, which I mean, I guess we'll do it if we have to. But is there a way to make it go longer? And since we've all agreed that what, to In, since we've all agreed that what, to follow the health departments or the county health departments' guidelines, two consecutive weeks of less than five, do we, can we leave it open-ended, or do we still need to bring it back every 30 or 45 days?
The council is able to make any edits or motions to modify, uh, what we provided in the agenda from the horseshoe that you wish to.
It's the pleasure of the council. I mean, you could be December, you could leave it open-ended.
Well, how about if we kind of split it this time and go to the, go to the first meeting in January and then revisit it then? Because it, you know, at, at some point, we may have to revisit that less than five, too. Hopefully, we don't, but with the hospital rates going up, and I think, I don't know if you, who's been in contact with the Midwest City Hospital?
Uh, yes, Mr. Reed, go ahead.
Okay, I, I'm even masked. I'm having a problem hearing somebody else. So instead of having a vote to continue it, why don't we have, uh, five days to... Not continue it, because we've technically been under the last two days without anything because of a storm. And if we do it opposite of, instead of voting to continue it, but having a vote to discontinue it, then it would stay in place regardless of what happened with meetings.
Basically, he's saying what I just brought up.
Sean, you had said you-
Continue it until we get under the five, less than five.
I'm saying, Sarah, I'm saying do it reverse, where instead of having to reauthorize it every 30 or 45 days, we have a vote scheduled for every 30 or 45 days with the kicker in that the health department suggested, which was two weeks below 5%. So if something happens, and I mean, if we go 45 days from now, we're not going to have another meeting within 45 days, because we don't have a second meeting in December. So if we have to where we voted to get rid of it instead of reauthorizing it, if we, for whatever reason, we don't have a meeting because of a storm, lack of quorum, whatever else, then the mandate for the mask continues with the kicker 5% or less positive over two weeks.
I don't have an issue with that, Matt.
You don't have, make a motion.
I make a motion that-
No, I'm s- there, I'm sorry. Um, there is, uh, Lindsey, did you want to address the?
Wellington Lane? Okay. Uh, just some things to consider when you're making your decision. Um, the Middel School Board is meeting tonight on whether or not to go back to school full-time and not have the, uh, socially-distanced AB schedule anymore, and I believe the idea is to follow the Choctaw School District as well, so it would probably be ill-advised to stop the mask mandate at this time.
Well, we're not trying to stop it. We're just trying to figure out how to, how to, so we don't have to do this every month.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was here tonight, is just bring that to light, that schools might go back full-time as well. And then considering that polling places, you know, record voter turnout, Thanksgiving, Christmas, et cetera, is coming up, and that's all I wanted to address.
All right. Thank you, Lindsey.
Thank you.
Is there any other further discussion?
I would object to, uh-
Can you please state your name?
Yes, Richard Cochran, 204 West Marshall Drive. I would object to, uh, making that open-ended, because I think it, uh, works ag- there's an effort to skew the data on COVID, and we have seen on television where the metrics that they report have changed over time. They have quit reporting the mortality rate. We know that over 99% of all classes of people will survive COVID, and that if you consider anybody under 65, that the rate goes up to 99.98%, something, you know, very few, uh, actually die as a percentage of the population. We are harming, you know, there are studies that show up to 72% of people who, uh, have acquired COVID, uh, were religious mask wearers. Okay? And that information is being suppressed and censored by Facebook, Twitter, and it, it's just, y- you cannot talk about it. And we need to allow for, uh, other scientific voices to be heard. There have been thousands of doctors who have submitted their ideas that are, that run counter to what Dr. Fauci says about it, and those voices are being suppressed. And so I think we just need to carry on as we are. If you, and I'm not saying you should... I'm, I'm not going to say what I really believe about the mask mandate, okay? I, I think you, uh, probably want to keep it in place. We ought to also consider the destructive element of wearing a mask all the time. Unable-to-read people, it's a very important component of children's learning, and we know that masks are harmful to children, and that they are very low candidates for ever, uh, you know, suffering from Co- COVID. The numbers are just very low. So I think, uh, our children, young lady brought up, uh, school, and, uh, we know that these masks are not being worn properly anyway, and that they're causing a lot of problems. People are putting their hands all over themselves, setting them down on a podium where somebody else just set theirs down and putting their hands all over it. So I'm not going to go into much longer speaking about what I believe about the whole mask-wearing thing, okay? I cannot wear one. Okay. But I think what you are doing, going month to month, is the appropriate thing to do. You're going to have a meeting every month. It's not taking that long on this agenda item. Comparatively to other agenda items, it's a very short period of time, and I suggest that we keep it as is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for Mr. Cochran. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I want, I want to respond to what Mr. Cochran just said. Just so, I want, I want the citizens of Midwest City to understand that this council does not take any of our advice off of Facebook. We take all of our abuse off of Facebook, but we don't take any of our advice off of Facebook. And we've all know that we take a lot. Where, where we make our decisions is from Mr. Clay Franklin, who is the CEO of the Midwest City Regional Hospital, and we take our health department advice from Phil Maytubby with the Oklahoma County Health Department. So with that being said, I make a motion that we pass this ordinance and do not put an end date on it, that we, and the reason that there's no end date is we, we're going into a season where there's bad weather, and we don't want to have an end date and just have to have an emergency meeting just to have a mask ordinance, with the understanding that we all agreed that two consecutive weeks, at the recommendation of the Oklahoma City County Health Department, two consecutive weeks of less than 5% is the trigger, and that would automatically pull. And in turn, on that same thing, is that if we have two consecutive weeks, the city manager has the authority to end it without calling for a special meeting.
I would also put a caveat onto that, Mr. Byrne, is that we, we, uh, look at the data every 15 days.
We're, I think they're getting, I think Debbie's getting stuff every week.
Well, it's not getting pushed out to us. So I would ask that.
Well, I make a motion-
I've made several requests to get data and-
Oh, crap.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, due to Oklahoma, Oklahoma Meetings Law, we do have a call-in member. Uh, we have to suspend discussion until we can get him back on the line, so... Mr. Cochran, you have seat, right, we, we can't even talk until we get this guy back online. I hope not. Okay.
There's a motion on the floor.
And actually, the, the discussion is suspended on this, this particular item. We do have a motion.
I just wanted the opportunity to rebut what he had said about my comment.
Well, we, we can't go back and forth, Mr. Cochran, on it. I've got a motion on the floor, and I'm going to have to hear it, so, thank you.
You- I'm sorry.
Okay, we've reestablished communication with Mr. Reed, and again-
Mr.-
M- Mr. Cochran, uh, we're not going to go back and forth on this. We've already, we've already seen the data. We've already got our recommendations. We've seen the other data that you're presenting as well. We feel like it's the best interest of our citizens to proceed on as we are, so I'm suspending discussion on this particular item, and I do have a motion on the floor, and I need a second.
Um, before we vote on that, can staff- Yeah. Can, can I get a clarification from Councilmember Byrne? When you say that you just want it to be if less than 5% of the tests in Oklahoma County are positive for more than two consecutive weeks, are we also leaving in if the expiration of all civil emergency orders related to COVID-19 issued by the state and city?
I don't think we have to put that in there as, uh... You tell me, Mr. Lyon, you want that added into the motion, too, or?
Why do we need that?
Okay, so we just, well, I'm just clarifying what we are not including from the prior ordinance, so we're just having it expire when it's less than 5% for two consecutive weeks?
What, what we're trying to accomplish is, just like we're going through right now, we're getting into the bad weather season. We could have a storm in the middle of December or Jan- or October, where our, the mask ordinance would basically expire.
Can I, can I remind everybody that we do have a motion on the floor, and I'm making a point of order?
So, so that's, I'm trying to clarify.
I was trying to clarify.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, stand by. Can somebody read the motion?
Okay, make a motion that we renew the ordinance as written with the exception of the expiration date, that the expiration will be when we have two consecutive weeks data reported by the Oklahoma City County Health Department of less than 5% positive test.
Can I say that again, Reed?
Is he admit, is he making the motion to do my idea, or are we going to stick with the way it was? I, I just need to know so I can what, what to make a motion on, or second on.
So he, he's, yes, that's pretty much what you're saying. We're doing no expiration date, and then it will be brought back, correct?
No, that's, no, he said that once we hit the, the, the criteria of two consecutive weeks of less than 5%-
Okay, that's going to be abolished.
-the city manager can abolish the ordinance.
So no expiration date, and it has the caveat already in there that states the two consecutive weeks.
Then I second that.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any further discussion on this item, on the fourth sheet?
Can I ask how you guys just made the motion, or just redid the whole thing, and now you're not going to have discussion about wanting to just redone?
Sir, you can either properly address this body, or you can be quiet. I have a motion and I have a second. Do I have any further discussion? All in favor, indicate for saying aye.
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 Abstentions? Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, let me remind you, there is a procedure to address this council. The procedure is that you approach the podium, you add, you sign up before the, for the meeting, you sign up for the item that you want to discuss, then you approach the podium, you address the podium by stating your name and address. We are not going to allow comments from the back section of this, this, uh, facility. We do have an emergency clause on this ordinance that we just passed, and I need a motion to pass the emergency clause.
Motion.
Motion to pass the emergency clause.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. That means that the, uh, ordinance goes into effect immediately. Item number three.
PC 2054, discussion and consideration of an ordinance amending Appendix A zoning regulations in the Midwest City Code, Section 5 supplemental regulations by amending subsection 5.7.2 trash dumpsters and enclosures and providing for repealer and severability. Mr. Harless.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. I guess we'll move on to something a little more controversial like garbage dumpster widths. I'd like to thank the Ordinance Review Committee and Mr. Chairman Byrne for helping us bring this through and, and expediting it so quickly. But it's, this is a simply just, uh, increasing by two feet the, uh, the dumpster enclosures, uh, community development work, the public works, uh, to, to modify this, because it was just too narrow for the, the trash trucks to safely access the dumpster enclosures and, and just modifying it by two feet, so it's recommended approval by the Orders Review Committee, and action is at your discretion, of course.
Is there any questions? Chair entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, item number four.
PC 2055, discussion and consideration of approval of the final plat of the Soldier Creek Industrial Park Skip, described as part of the northeast corridor of Section 27, Township 12 North, Range 2 West, located at 7,900 Northeast 23rd Street. Mr. Harless.
I think you, Mr. Lyon. Um, as you pointed out, this is just a final plat for Soldier Creek Industrial Park. When we did this the first time around, we had rather large lots, uh, with the anticipation of large users being there, um, and with the help of Mr. Coleman, um, we realized that the, dividing it up into smaller lots and changing it up a little bit offers him a lot more flexibility to offer these lots to, uh, a wider range of potential users, and so that's what this does, is just, uh, memorializes that in the final plat.
Mr. Coleman, you have anything for the council?
Couldn't have said it better myself.
Mr. Cochran, you signed up to talk about skip?
Yes, sir, I just had a couple of questions about it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I've, I'm without power in my house, and so I don't have the internet, or I probably could have researched this myself, but, uh, as I was reading through that discussion item, I noticed that back in 2012, it was a PUD governed by two zoning districts. Now, as I had previously brought up to this council before about the SPUD of the Bellum Project, um, that is not permitted according to Midwest City Code. In the PUD section of the Appendix A of the zoning regulations for PUDs, it, uh, states that it, it refers to the PUD being governed by a single zoning district, and that is, uh, not as clearly written as it is in the SPUD, uh, zoning regulations, but what you do find is there's a link. Ms. Hancock, are you able to pull that up on the internet, the code?
Can I?
Are you, yes, are you able to? Could you pull that up on the screen?
I, I don't think we have that capability, Mr. Cochran.
Okay. Well, anyway, there is a link within the zoning regulations of the PUD that refers to the application. In the application, it states very clearly that the applicant is to name the one zoning district that governs the PUD. Now, I don't know if this dates back to 2012 or not, and I don't know, because again, I was unable to research this, I don't know if the, uh, PUD of the skip is still governed by two zoning districts, but clearly, to me, that is not permitted. That could create a legal problem, I would think, for the city down the road, and, and so maybe Mr. Harless would like to address that.
Mr. Harless? Thank you, Mr. Cochran. I do remember us discussing that before. I do remember us discussing that before.
Well, this isn't a zoning hearing, this is about a final plat, so, I don't.
Could you speak up, I can't hear you?
I said, this is not, this is not a zoning hearing, this is about the final plat. We've heard that we've had the zoning years ago, this is, we had the preliminary plat, and this is the final plat. I don't know about the different zoning districts, which ones are, what he's talking about. It's about plating.
Okay. So, when he, when the city first did this, would they have been governed by what he was just talking about? You know? When, when the zoning came in, not the, not this step, but the initial step would have been zoning, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, would we have been governed by that when that happened, or is?
Well, when we, and I'd have to go back and look at the, I'd have to go back and look at the, the zoning document to see what all was laid out and what was actually put in there. I mean, I don't have that for, for memory now.
PUDs do allow for more flexibility in mixed use zonings. Mr. Cochran is right that S-PUDs can only be governed by one zoning district, but PUDs do allow for more flexibility.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Sure, Ms. Cochran, come on.
That's a very general statement. SPUDs allow for more flexibility as well. That's, clearly, we know that. But what I'm stating is that it, it clearly states that the PUD in the, when the applicant, who is the applicant on this, I wonder, the city? The city is the applicant, and the city is directed to name the one zoning district. Now, I realize this is not a current issue, because we're looking at the plat, as Mr. Harless said, but not the zoning. What I'm saying is the zoning was done in error, if in fact, that part of the code dates back to 2012. And that the council approved it in error, and that perhaps it creates legal issues going forward.
We'll, we'll make sure our city attorney takes a look at that, make sure we're not getting ourselves hemmed up.
That should probably be addressed before we go further with it. It would be my contention as well.
Well, again, that's why we, we have an attorney. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this current item? Chair, entertain a motion.
Well, can Heather, or, since it's a legal question, or?
That, the zoning is not before the council tonight. So, Mr. Harless is correct in that if you approve the plating, that really has very little to do with the zoning. There's some overlap, but, and what we would have to do is then that would limit probably the use. We'd have to look at what we put on the application. And, again, when we submitted the application, it was before we passed. And again, Ms. Giles is indicating that the PUD would allow flexibility for more than just one zoning request. So, we'll look at that and get, but the, the vote on the plat may proceed.
Motion to approve.
A motion?
Sir, sir, I was trying to approach before he spoke.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have only one more thing to add to that.
Yes, sir.
It does allow flexibility, and I understand the code. The, the way in which you get that flexibility is to identify one underlying base zoning district. And then, the flexibility comes with every departure from that base zoning, the regulations of that base zone have to come through special use regulations. So, they have to be named and specific. That's how you get the flexibility. You name them, you put them in there, you say, we want this that departs from the underlying zoning, and that's how you get that flexibility. You do not name two ba-, underlying base zoning districts.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, any give a sing aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention, motion carries. Item number five.
PC 2053, public hearing with discussion and consideration of approval of an ordinance to rezone from R6, single-family detached residential to R2F, two-family attached residential, and a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from LDR, low-density residential, to MDR, medium residential, a medium-density residential for the property addressed at 2,200 St. Luke. The planning commission continue this item to the November meeting. Billy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lyon. The applicant didn't show up at the planning commission, so as we do with standard procedure is that when somebody doesn't show up for their application, we do the courtesy of extending it to the next meeting, and continue to notify them to show up to hear, to have the hearing. So, that's why it was continued. The reason we're hearing it tonight is because those dates were published for hearings in front of you all as the council, is when notices were sent out. So, we would request that this be tabled.
Be tabled, or no action taken?
It's gonna be heard in the next council meeting?
Hopefully, yes.
As is?
Yes.
If he shows up?
If he shows up.
So, the mo-, the motion needs to be, it's tabled, and that's your request, Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The item's tabled. Again, item number six, ladies and gentlemen, has been tabled at the request of the ward representative. We move into item number seven.
Item number seven, PC 2051, discussion and consideration approval of the proposed preliminary plat of the curve described as a part of the southwest quarter of Section 8 Township 11 North, Range 1 West, located 11004 Southeast 28th Street. This item is continued from September.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This item is requested, this item is a request to subdivide a single parcel into twenty individual parcels for single and, for single and two-family residential development. The properties currently zoned are to a two-family attached residential. The zoning does allow for development of duplexes and single-family homes. No variance of, I'm sorry, no variances to any of the requirements of the zoning ordinances for the development of R2F district will be allowed within this development. A preliminary plat for this area was approved in September of 2016. However, the plat expired in September of 2018, as construction plans in the final plat had not been submitted or approved. At the two, at the September 1, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, the applicant waived the right to the sixty-day action to allow him to, to propose a plan to staff that will meet the requirements for the trail, and meet with surrounding neighbors to address their concerns. The applicant has met with staff regarding the trail, and has agreed to provide the required, required right-of-way to accommodate the trail. The meeting with the neighbors was, was held September 24, 2020. Action is at the discretion of the city council. Glad to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Harless?
But I think he's gonna speak first. Okay.
They'll do half-street improvements to, up to standard. For, for the, the development. Just for the development? Yes. No, that's, no, sir, that's not part of the requirements.
On, there's a statement, there's, there's a couple of statements in the bill I wanted to ask you about. And it says, it's suggested that, talking about streets and sidewalks, it's requested that the lane is overlaid with two-inch layer of asphalt to seal the seam. You're asking him to do that, right? Because it says it's, it's suggested. Does that mean he has to do it, or, because it, is that required, or?
You wanna, Brandon, you wanna answer any road improvement questions?
Yes, Mr. Councilman, that was my report, just in the condition of the roadway. Asking the developer, or politely asking him, we don't necessarily have the requirement set out in the subdivision ordinance that says that they must overlay the road.
Do, do we need to make that part of, if we approve this, is that something that we need to make part of the motion, or are y'all gonna be able to work through that?
That would, that would be up to you. There is a precedence that would be set by requiring this developer to overlay the road versus another. Is the only reason I made it a suggestion, and not a mandate.
Okay. The second thing, and I guess this is your report too, it talks about the basin two flows largely through an existing pond onto property, then east via sheet flow across private property. So, is that somebody else's property that's gonna get, you know how I like water, so is that?
Mm-hmm. Currently, the, the development is split. There's a kind of a ridge that goes through there. The water that goes to the west down Westminster, and then to the north. And then, there's some that go to the east through an existing pond. The developer's going to regrade it, but they can't change the grading of the ro-, of the development to put all the water onto Westminster. So, historically, some water has been going through private property down Southeast 28th Street.
So, is, here again, is that something that's in the develop, in the subdivision regulations? That it's not, just recommended, it's not required?
It, it's, it would be very difficult to get the water from the southeast corner of the development to Southeast 28th or Westminster, and not onto private property. What I can do is I've requested that the engineer do some diligence on how that water comes onto the private property. Ideally, it would be sheet flow, and not a point discharge, which is typically the problem that we, we've been having. I've had some discussions with other engineers as well about how we can take a point discharge and put it back into a sheet flow, or redistribute some of the water. Until some of those get built, I can't show you evidence of, of those.
Is a developer here? Okay, just so you're aware what we're asking them. Because we've had a history of some water issues, and that's very, very sensitive. Which brings me up, and this will be the last thing I ask you, Brandon.
Sure.
On your check sheet, there's two different places that, that you put apparent issue around Lot 7 Block 2. It has to do with retaining walls. It would be on the, on your, on your second page of the check sheet, and then the fourth page of the check sheet, about halfway down.
And it was Lot 7?
It says apparent issue is around Lot 7 Block 2. And it has to do with the required retaining walls and retaining wall easements.
Yeah, I was trying to, I'm trying to get to the site plan here.
Because it's, this is right across the street from Turtlewood, right? Basically, where we've had a lot of problems with the retaining walls?
This is to the east. I, let me look at the site plan, if, what I was trying to identify. What I was trying to call attention to was, there's going to be a steep slope from the lot to the west, to the, down to lot to the east. Typically, our drainage problems are from side lots to side lot to side lot, not usually from in the back through someone's house. There is a sewer that's going to be through there, so it's gonna be a steep slope, and there's gonna be sewer there. So, we're gonna have to work with the developer, or the engineer, on how to either put a retaining wall in there and not be on the sewer, or mitigate some of that slope.
Okay, so, and they're aware, he's aware of it now, because he's shaking his head, because?
Yeah, we, we've, we've looked through this development quite a bit.
And you understand I'm not picking?
No.
This is a, especially with, just directly across the street to the west, we, before you were on, we had a lot of problems over there in Turtlewood with the retaining walls falling down and not being properly built. So, that's what, that's, the alarm went off when I was reading through it.
Well, and since then, specifically in Oakwood East, I think, they have a lot of timber retaining walls, and we don't allow those anymore. They will be properly built, that we inspect now. But I appreciate you looking through my checklist. Usually, that's a very low-down piece of paper, so, your attention to detail is appreciated.
Well, I, I'm not sure what it was meant as.
No, I, I appreciate it. Now, now I know someone reads what I write.
I read it all, I mean, especially when it has the word water.
Yes.
I read it, because.
Mr. Fanning, you signed up to speak to the council? Can you approach and state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Tim Fanning, I live at 9321 Pear Street. I own property to the east of the proposed development. A couple of things I'd like to ask. It was stated in the description that it was gonna be multifamily and some single-family residencies built. According to their plan, it's nineteen, or, I'm sorry, it's, I believe it's eighteen duplexes and one single-family, so it's not really gonna be a mix. It's gonna be thirty-nine different families living on a corner right there. And as you can see, and as you hear, in my opinion, it's, it's a little shaky right now on the drainage issue, and if you're gonna pass this and just expect them to follow up, and they're gonna do the right thing, I mean, to me, that's, that's a little scary as a property owner. I wanna say thank you to the developer for having the meeting last month, and I wanna thank the mayor for attending. It was greatly appreciated by all, and I seem to be the lone representative tonight because of some power issues over there in that neighborhood. And I know the mayor told us that when you have property, the city can't, and it's zoned a certain way, the city can't just tell you what to do with your own property. And that basically, it's zoned for multifamily living, then that, so be it. That's, that's what it is.
Well.
But the mayor did mention that drainage and capacity are the two things you guys can govern. And, and that's where I come in tonight. We're, we're trying to cram nineteen families on this little corner here. And, and the developer told us that by scale, this is a small project. They usually do things a lot bigger, this didn't, this is no big deal. There's not that many places. But when you have thirty-nine, potential thirty-nine families dumping out on Southeast 28th Street, one block from 29th and Westminster, that's a lot of people on one corner. And that goes straight to the density issue. And so, I would just ask you to think, in your neighborhood, down at the corner, if they just were gonna add thirty-nine families to dump out into your neighborhood, would, I mean, would you, would you like that? I mean, I, I want you to see it from our perspective as, as landowners and homeowners over there, that if it's zoned for duplexes, then, then let's build duplexes. But do we need to build nineteen or eighteen duplexes in one single-family home on this square, five acres, six acres of property? And I think you guys are already questioning the roads, the drainage, and I don't think you really even considered the density issue of how many pieces of property they're willing to put here on this corner. I own three acres just to the east on Southeast 28th Street. I own right in front of the F in area of request. And the person who owns the five acres next to the property is also wanting to build a residence there. But now, they're concerned that they're building on Southeast 29th, which I under, I know that it's Oklahoma City, it's not Midwest City. But he's worried now that he's gonna get flooded out, because you can see with the drainage path, it all runs to that building. Now, I don't know if that being Oklahoma City makes it any difference in your eyes, but as the property owners, we're very worried about drainage. And I, my intention, my family's intentions are to build a home just east of there. So, I, I don't under, I don't really see how we have enough information to pass something of this significance tonight, especially with, with just the questions that's been asked so far. I mean, they would just be kind of passing something in the blind, in my opinion. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you, Mr. Fanning. The applicants in the audience, would you wanna address the council?
Thank you, Brad Reed with Crafton Toll, here on behalf of the applicant. As you stated, we're well aware of the drainage ordinances of Midwest City. As you stated, we're well aware of the drainage ordinances of Midwest City, and what this is, is a preliminary plat. So, what we have is the engineering documents and the final plat, which we'll come back for before you guys. And then, we'll have a long process dealing with your city engineer backstory. They couldn't get this approved because the engineer that was there did not give them quality plans. Your city staff basically said, "No, this is not how it's gonna work. We're not gonna do this." I've had some other dealings with your city staff. They are, are very thorough in what they do. And I wanna remind you that this is a preliminary plat. It's very similar to one that was already approved. We've actually taken two lots out of the one that was approved from before. They didn't quite meet the requirements set forth by your city. We have zoning that's in place, and we're requesting the preliminary plat be approved. We're not asking for any variances, any ordinances. We're well aware of the requirements that we have to maintain with the drainage, with 28th Street widening. You know, if there's an issue with the way that we can tie in, basically, as an engineering standpoint, we have to basically do that overlay to make it work. I know 28th is a little rough, so we can't just cut the middle and then allow a pothole to stay there. So, we can do that two inches of overlay to tie back into the other side, and we're well aware of that work through city staff, your city engineers, to get that done, so.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, Councilman, favors. We will make sure that's addressed at the time we receive the improvement plans. We have heard y'all very clearly on the drainage issues, and Brandon has, with the help of Patrick, both city engineers are making every step that they can to, within our ordinances, to address those. And so, they've stepped up their game, so to speak, over the past couple of years, too, to address those issues. So, they will, they will be addressed. Yeah, Patrick Minifee, he's the public works engineer and has some history with this.
All right. And Mr. Fanning, please understand, this is just a preliminary process. This is not the final process. Please understand that. So, with that being said, Chair to entertain a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Mr. Fanning, thanks for showing up. Okay, item number eight, again, ladies and gentlemen, has been tabled, and will come back for a council December 8 meeting. The next item is item number nine, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion and consideration of clearing an immediate emergency under Section 2-126 of the Midwest City Code and authorizing immediate outlay of city funds, possibly in amount in excess of the limit set by Section 2-118 of the City Code and the Public Competing Bidding Act of 1974, authorizing city manager to contract as necessary, appropriate to address the recent severe and extraordinary weather conditions without public notice or competitive bids.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is just one of the many steps in a series of steps that we're gonna have to take to not only protect our citizens, but also get reimbursed as the declaration is signed by not only the governor, but also the president. So, with that being said, is there any further discussion? And Chair to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Just to remind the council, each year, as a part of our emergency operations plan, we bring a contract to you with Silver, we brought Silver Star Construction, so you have seen a contract on debris removal, and it has gone through the public process. So, anyway, that's a part of, just part of our emergency operations plan.
Any abstentions?
June 23rd, we renewed that, okay.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, move into the public discussion of our, new business public discussion of our agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council? Chief Norton.
I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work by all of our men and women in Midwest City this week. Tuesday was an extraordinary day for us. Just alone, we ran 154 incidents, and we didn't do those alone. We ran them with the police officers. We're making calls for us on downed power lines, as well as the public works department. So, on behalf of the fire chief, I just want you guys to know that we certainly appreciate all the hard work for the, the men and women for the city, Midwest City. The dispatchers handled probably twice as many of those phone calls that we didn't respond to, so they all did an extraordinary job. We sent you guys a CMOU update on Tuesday of the activity that took place, so again, thanks for your commitment to us, and appreciate all the hard work by all those men and women.
Including the fire chief, who got out in the middle of the rain and moved a big log that was blocking a residential street by himself.
Also, the fire chief voluntarily went into the EOC and helped answer calls for several days this week.
So, it's Chief Bert Norton Day. Way to be, chief. You have something to bring new business public discussion?
Do I need to say my name and address again?
Uh, no, we got it covered.
Okay. Well, I'm just kinda responding to what Mr. Sullivan had spoken about earlier with the debris removal. I know, and I read on the website where the, they're kinda relaxing the requirements. Now, is the debris that the contractor, is it gonna be taken to the compost facility as well? I'm sorry, I, I know this part is not supposed to be back and forth.
No, that's all right.
The contractor will be responsible for tipping it at the landfill. Okay. Now, if you bring it in your trailer or your pickup, you're allowed to bring it to the compost facility. Is that relaxed as well? By relaxed, you mean? Okay, that's, that's what I was gonna, uh. Right, I'm very aware of that. I deal with those gentlemen out there, and I would say they would appreciate sticking to that. Now, the brush is kinda generally self-limiting. People don't wanna handle big, long pieces of brush, but the logs is what really creates the problem for them out there. And then, I just had one other suggestion that perhaps what could be done in the parks is a simple solution, maybe to keeping people protected, is just to use some caution tape around trees that present a problem. Maybe they could make a little survey real quick and just wrap those.
I saw some up in regional this, this afternoon, so yeah, they're, they're on top of it, buddy. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. Is there any more business to bring before the council? Hearing none, we're hereby adjourned. I call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda, and these items are placed on the consent agenda, so the council can, in one vote, approve routine agenda items. If any one item does not meet with the approval of the audience or the council, it can be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And a motion and a second, discussion. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. We move into new business public discussion of the authority. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call to order the Midwest City Hospital Authority. We do have a consent agenda with this as well. We, routine consent agenda is to be passed by unanimous consent by the council on routine agenda items. If any one item does not meet with the approval of the council, it can be removed and heard in regular order, or the audience. With that being said, Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We had one discussion item?
No action needed, Mayor.
No action needed on discussion item number one, new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? We do have an executive session attached to this agenda, Mr. Lyon.
We do not need an executive session.
No executive session needed. Any new business public discussion bring before the authority? Seeing or hearing none, we're hereby adjourned. I call to order the Economic Development Commission. We do have, again, a consent agenda attached to this. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Again, we move into new business public discussion. Does anybody have anything to bring before the commission? Hearing none, we have an executive session attached to this agenda, Mr. Lyon.
Robert, do we need an executive session? Okay. Discussion and consideration of one entering into executive session is allowed under 25OS, Section 307(c)(11) to confer on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing or the creation of a proposal to entice the business remainder to locate within the city, and two, an open session, authorizing the general manager administrator to take actions appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.
I would like the indulgence of council to recess this, this agenda and move into the next agenda and come back.
That is the last agenda.
We, we don't have urban renewal authority?
No, motion to go in executive session.
I have a motion and a second to go in the executive session. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're in executive session.